Good evening, welcome to the April 20th Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners meeting. Please join me in standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we voting for multiple speakers?
The board needs to introduce themselves, including Paul, and the chair needs to identify that Mr. Jacob is on the floor.
We need to vote him in, correct? No?
No. Okay, that's the way you always do it.
We're still under the same previous COVID rules. We don't need to vote him in, but you need to identify he's on the phone. If it makes him feel good.
So each of you needs to identify yourself, and then Paul needs to identify.
Okay, great. We'll go around the table.
Jason Johnson.
John Marcy.
Kerry Siganevich.
Stephen Sullivan.
John Rutter.
Mr. Joseph, could you say your name, please, to identify yourself for the people at home?
Paul M. Joseph.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Would it be apropos to have everyone in the room identify themselves also for the record?
We can, we can do it as we speak.
Okay, we can do it as we speak, then?
Right, right.
Okay.
We don't need to, we're not required to identify folks who are here as witnesses.
I just want, I thought maybe for Paul, so Paul would know who's here.
Well, I'll certainly make sure that's before I talk.
Oh, I'm pretty sure he knows she's here.
Okay, next on the agenda is new business, open meeting law complaint, April 7th, 2021, from David Dergan. Acknowledge receipt, discuss complaint, and any action to be taken thereon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Michelle Randazzo from KP Law Town Council's office. It's good to see everybody in person, it's been quite a long time. If anybody can't hear me, I'm not used to talking in large rooms with a mask on, I've been working at home for the past year, so please don't hesitate to ask for clarification. As the chairman identified, the agenda item before you right now is a discussion of an open meeting law complaint received from David Dergan, was dated April 7th, and it's with regard to the board's April 5th, 2021 meeting. I'm just going to talk, first I'm going to give you an outline of process, and then I'm going to go into substance. I thought it would be useful for the board, since I don't think you've had one of these open meeting law complaints before, to explain what the process is. And under state regulation, anybody who believes that any public body has violated a requirement of the open meeting law can bring forth an open meeting law complaint. And in the first instance, that complaint goes to the body that is alleged to have violated the law, and the body has the opportunity, and is in fact required under state regulation, to prepare a written response. And that response is what we're going to be discussing tonight. It can be something as simple as, we've reviewed your complaint, we don't think we did anything wrong, or, oops, you got us, we did something wrong, we're going to do better in the future, or anything in between. My process for handling these generally, and it's proven to be the most efficient for the communities that I work with, is that I will look at an open meeting law complaint, I'll analyze it legally, I'll look to see what the open meeting law requires, what the allegations are, I'll look at the facts, I'll look at the postings, I'll gather some factual information, and I'll prepare a written response, such as the draft that you have before you this evening, for the purpose of helping expedite the board's consideration review of a complaint. We will discuss that complaint tonight, the board will have an opportunity to ask questions or to identify ways in which the draft that I've prepared, they think that there needs to be, and remember, the board believes that there ought to be additional information or different information, and if after the end of the discussion all are satisfied with the draft, then I would ask that there be a motion to adopt the response, either with or without the changes that we might discuss tonight, adopt it on behalf of the board, and authorize me to send it on its behalf. These complaint responses need to go to the Attorney General as well, it's a matter of convention that we address them to the Attorney General and copy the complainant. If Mr. Dergan or any complainant is unsatisfied with the response given, then they have the option at that point to move the complaint to the Attorney General's office. So right now, what you have before you is, as you may have seen in the transmittal email from Mr. Dergan, step one in the process. There's no requirement that the Attorney General get involved at this point, but as I said, as a matter of convention and in accordance with their regulations, we do provide them a copy of this response, that they have it on file, in the event that someone chooses to go forward beyond that. If a complaint is advanced to the Attorney General's office, then the Division of Open Government conducts its own review and investigation and issues a determination. So that's in a nutshell the process. Does anybody have any questions about process before we move on to the substance? Okay. So in terms of substance, this complaint is very straightforward, very simple, and very easily addressed, and in my view dismissed. Mr. Dergan alleges that on, at the board's April 5th meeting, it failed to record the meeting, and it failed to provide a, either via live broadcast or broadcast after the fact, any recording of the meeting. There is no requirement under the open meeting law that an in-person meeting of any board or committee be recorded by the town. There's no requirement that the town make available either through local cable access or Facebook Live or any, any other medium, a recording of that meeting, okay? That the town may have done so, pre-pandemic, was certainly above and beyond what the open meeting law requires, okay? And any resident or citizen or anybody that sits in the audience of an in-person meeting can themselves record a meeting upon notification to the chair, and so long as it's not obstructing the meeting's operation, but the town or the board is required to do that. Now, the rules changed a little bit during the pandemic, obviously, when the governor allowed boards to do completely virtual meetings, and in those limited instances, there were requirements that folks be able to, either listen in in real time, or if there was no way to do that because of a technology issue, despite best efforts, then the option of making a recording available after the fact was allowed as a way to remediate the fact that there was some interference with an in-person, a real-time ability to view the meeting. But your April 5th meeting was completely in-person. The agenda was clear in that regard, there was nothing on the agenda that indicated that it was going to be a remote meeting, as your prior agendas had, and in the days leading up to the April 5th meeting, your town hall had reopened, albeit on a partial schedule. That was advertised pretty extensively. During the day on April 5th, which was your first in-person, completely in-person meeting since the pandemic had started, when it was, when staff discovered that the recording equipment was not going to allow for a real-time broadcast or the recording, there was a notice placed up on the town's Facebook page that alerted folks to the fact, but reminded folks that the meeting was in-person, people were encouraged to attend, and Mr. Dergan, the complainant in this case, was well aware of that because he commented on that Facebook thread with respect where it was clearly identified that the meeting was going to be held at 6:30 in Room 321A of Town Hall, and that comment, by the way, was by another resident. Clearly, they were able to access that information. As I've indicated in the draft response, the meeting agendas are very easily found on the town's calendar, which is right on the homepage. Anybody who wanted to could find that information, and in fact, as evidenced by the number of people, I understand, who did in fact intend, attend in-person that meeting, it, people knew that it was, that in-person attendance was not only permitted, but that the meeting was going to be entirely in-person.
Attorney Randazzo, can I interrupt Mr. Jim for a moment?
Certainly.
I just want to be clear, you made it clear, but I want to be clear also. The incident you talked about, the Facebook thread, where the person who filed the complaint commented that we weren't going to be in session, and the person that responded was nowhere, no way, a town employee, a town official, it was another resident who, as you stated eloquently, better than I just tried, clearly could find the information either on the website or found it somewhere.
Absolutely, and that's really my point with that Facebook thread. It was a town post saying, hey, by the way, we've discovered that the recording isn't, the recording equipment's not working right, it's an in-person meeting, everybody can attend. And in response to those were a series of maybe half a dozen or so comments, including a couple by Mr. Dergan, and a person unaffiliated with town said, hey, the meeting's according to the agenda, it's at 6:30 PM, Room 231A, and Mr. Dergan's comment immediately followed that. But yes, you're correct, that post that he posted immediately thereafter was not a town employee, official, or resident, some, a resident or some third party, I don't know who he is, other than the fact that he's not a member of town government, they knew it, people were here.
Just want to emphasize that point.
And I think, you know, I don't have a good sense of, you know, that it was nine million people that showed up, but there were people in person, in attendance at your meeting, because of items that were on the agenda, that they were interested in, in listening to and hearing the discussion on. So clearly, there was no, you know, the doors weren't locked, people, you know, it would be really a far stretch to try to argue that nobody knew where the meeting was, that it was in-person, it was properly posted in accordance with the open meeting law, and the fact that these technological issues were identified sort of shortly before the meeting, it's not a secret meeting, it's not a cover-up, it was a, wow, we just found this out, we're letting the public know, but there's no requirement, as I said at the outset, to record or broadcast the meetings. It's something that I think some people have gotten used to for the virtual meetings during the pandemic, and to the extent that even pre-pandemic, it was done as a matter of facilitating public's ability to watch the workings of government, it was above and beyond what the open meeting law required. And I think that, you know, there's certainly steps that are being taken, to my understanding, to make sure that, to the degree that you can and are able, that that equipment's being upgraded, and that there will be the ability to hopefully be able to record meetings that are held in different rooms, right? Because when you have multiple meetings going on at the same time, and different meeting and hearing rooms are being occupied, public hearings, for example, might take priority for the rooms with the equipment that's most readily available to record and/or record, whether audio or video, or for cable access.
Right, and Mr. Chair.
Sullivan.
There's 10 people here right now, and I would think, maybe we could squeeze one more in, but this room is not conducive to a selectman-held public hearing and/or joint committee meetings like we experienced in the last couple meetings, numbers-wise, based on the governor's recommendation, including social distancing. So that is part of the reason why we're here this meeting, because we can do it, but the previous meeting, it was what, at least 20, maybe 30, and the one before that was well over 30, so we couldn't do that.
And I think that's a point, you know, one of the things that we were also experiencing at the time that you were reopening Town Hall on a limited basis, was there were changes to what the governor's, governor had said we could do in terms of in-person gatherings, right? The limits had just been increased from the prior 10-person limit for indoors to 100, but you still have to observe social distancing. So the meetings at which you anticipate there will be a greater turnout are going to be the ones that are in the larger rooms, precisely for the reason that you've identified, to ensure that we can maintain social distancing, okay? And so, you know, when there are multiple meetings scheduled for the same time or the same evening, you are doing a bit of that juggling, quite frankly, to ensure that you are able to observe those social distancing requirements at the same time. And that may mean that a meeting is held in a room that it normally isn't, or that there may or may not be video or audio recording capabilities, okay? Again, as long as it's a completely in-person meeting, there isn't a requirement that the meeting be recorded or otherwise.
Thank you.
Now, that's really the heart and the sum and substance of this particular complaint and the draft response. I will, Mr. Dergan today filed a second open meeting law complaint, basically alleging the same thing with respect to the April 12th board meeting. We're not going to be able to discuss that in any detail tonight, but it's the same argument, basically. Wasn't recorded, should have been recorded. I will note that Mr. Dergan identified in his transmittal, his filing email, if you will, that he had questions, he was unable to attend tonight because of some late notice or lack of invite, and I would just simply, to the extent that the board had any question in this regard, this is the board's opportunity to discuss the complaint and the response. There is no, it is not an open forum, it is not a forum for the complainant to ask any questions or engage the board in any dialogue, and in fact, in any, I can't even tell you how many of these complaints I've reviewed of individual boards, never have, has the floor been open to the complainant to, you know, weigh in or direct questions, whether directly related to the open meeting law complaint or otherwise. And so the only requirements under the open meeting law are that we post them timely, we clearly put it on the agenda, and the onus is on anybody, including the complainant, to look at your agendas, where they're posted properly, and make their own determinations about whether they wish to attend for purposes of observation. But this isn't a public hearing, this is not a situation where the board is required, nor have I ever, really, quite frankly, had the board engage with a complainant about the substance of their open meeting law complaint.
So when we have to do this again for the second complaint, I am, I am not obligated to recognize anyone from the public.
That is 100% correct.
Thank you.
100% correct.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Joseph, go ahead, sir.
Before we begin, or have any discussion or vote, could I ask you to legal counsel, or legal counsel to you? Isn't the board required to take a roll call vote to permit me to participate remotely?
Now, you folks have already voted, there was a change in the public, the public open meeting law regulations with regards to remote participation, so you need to just declare that he's participating remotely because he's unavailable.
Mr. Joseph, were you able to hear that, sir?
No, I wasn't playing.
We do not have to vote you in any longer, there were changes to the, to the, to the meeting law. What we do have to do, though, is we all have to identify ourselves, including yourself, before the start of the meeting, so according to counsel, we've, we've met that requirement, sir.
Okay. So do I have to do anything?
No, when you said your name quite articulately, that was, that was all you needed to do, sir, that was perfect.
Thank you, and I appreciate the advice and legal counsel.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
A separate question that just came up, that's because we adopted the remote participation several years ago.
Correct.
Okay. So the second one you referenced, which I'm not up to speed on, is no, we're not going to address it tonight, but there's no way we can address the response to the proper authority that we got a second one under the same auspices and the same remedy.
It's, you know, I thought about that, whether we could, and to be quite frank, if it was only received today, it was not anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance, we could have put it on there, and we could discuss it tonight, but I think we'd be buying another open meeting law complaint.
Okay.
Right? And, you know, to be honest with you, it's not a dance that I think any of us wants to go into.
No.
I think it's just simply cleaner to, you know, have the time to prepare a draft response for you, which will, you know, in all likelihood, very much mirror this one. You may not need me there, second time around, as much as I'd like to see, you may not need me, because we'll have now gone through the process once, but, you know, in my view, it just, it was cleaner, quite frankly, than to try to do a late add-on, which I think you could have done under the open meeting law, and I did seriously consider about whether I would recommend that to you, but I just didn't want to open us up to a third open meeting law complaint, that we had not put it on the agenda with 48 hours and the like. And to that point, the Attorney General advises that if you have time, and it's not a true emergency, that you wait till you can properly post it, and we have plenty of time, we have 14 business days from receipt of the complaint to, to do a response, and we can ask for additional time if we need to, you've got town meeting coming up, if there's, if there's some delay in us, you know, being able to revisit this at another meeting with clear 48 hours posted notice, we can talk about whether that deadline is absolute, or whether we can get an extension for same. But honestly, that was my thought process, I thought about it because I wanted to save you some, some time and effort on my part and on your part, but I really thought we would just be opening ourselves up to yet a third open meeting law complaint, didn't think that was the best course of action, okay?
Very good.
So now, you know, I know that we've answered some questions throughout, if the board has any other questions it wishes to ask, I'm happy to answer them, and the board can discuss the draft response, and whether or not it, you know, they feel that it accurately describes the board's position, or whether there's any questions they have, or things they'd like to change. Again, this is, I've probably talked longer than is really warranted here, right? Because this is a very straightforward issue.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Don't want to paraphrase, don't, synopsis, we did everything right.
Correct.
Synopsis, under no obligation to have live broadcast, rebroadcast, taped broadcast.
For a completely in-person meeting? No.
For a completely in-person. Your excellent address and answer, which will be the same one as you already indicated, we have done nothing wrong, again.
Correct.
So how does the message get delivered, well, in this circumstance, to the same complainant twice? How does he understand that it's baseless, warrantless, no, no basis of fact, and what prevents continued requests, similar to this vein, where the town is in the, in the right, but someone can attempt to gum up the works for the want of a better chance?
Well, you know, the point of the way this process is structured is precisely to, you know, provide that initial response with the hope that in cases such as this, a complainant who may have been under a misapprehension as to what the law required would say, oh, okay, I see, I get it now, and we move on. Now, I can't guarantee you that that happens, right? It may be that it is not until the Attorney General makes a conclusion, which, you know, I'm, I'm a lawyer, but I never guarantee anybody anything, right? But, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I would say that's what I would expect that the Attorney General would find, that there was no violation here, and that we might be able to move on. But that determination is not going to happen before we'd have to answer the second complaint, and there isn't really, there's no mechanism for us to say, we're not going to answer these anymore, you know, this is the fifth one, for example, hypothetically, that you filed, that's the same topic, we're not going to answer anymore, although at some point, I might just say, see what we said the last three or four times, right? Can't convince people of some things, right? The sky looks blue to me, but maybe it's red to somebody else.
I have a question, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. This document, this draft, once it becomes the actual document that we sent, is this a public document?
Absolutely.
So I am free to discuss anything on this.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to double check.
Yes, and I should have said that, this is, you know, even though this draft response goes to Mr. Dergan and the Attorney General's office, it is absolutely a public record.
I'm fairly certain that this will either be it or something extremely close to it. I want to be careful of what I say, because as it says here, Mr. Dergan has sued the town unsuccessfully in the Superior Court, and has an appeal against the town presently pending in an appellate tax, tax board. The first sentence in this paragraph states, further the open meeting law does not require the town to respond to every inquiry or question from a citizen. And Mr. Dergan had said, he complained that his request to have the recording of the meeting uploaded to the town's website, in quotes, fell on deaf ears. My question is, considering that there's a legal case here, Mr. Dergan has somehow got a hold of my personal email address, and he emails me, and I haven't responded. So I am under no obligation to respond to him, but he tags me on a post on social media. I'm not a big fan of doing anything on social media, besides.
Amen, I don't recommend it.
I mean, my old college roommate's kids I played rugby with, great, seeing how they're doing now.
See the kids graduating, all that.
I don't want to get into deep discussions. My, my question is, what is my obligation as a selectman to respond to him when he reaches out to me personally? And I want to say generally, when people ask me a question, they get me at the grocery store or wherever else I may be in town, I generally don't mind, but, but when it's the 27th time, I, I'm looking for your guidance as far as whether I'm obligated to respond to him.
So in general, no, and now I'll give you my lawyer caveats. If he's made a request that might look like a public records request, even though you're not a records access officer, most communities would pass that along to the records access officer. Not obligated to do that, right? But if any citizen alleges that a town employee or official is engaged in criminal activity, and, and like, it, there's something that you look at and go, oh, somebody needs to look at this, like, I wouldn't sit on it, but other than acknowledging receipt, no legal obligation to, to respond. Beyond sort of those extreme areas, I think you're governed solely by what you feel is good customer and constituent service, and if somebody's emailing me every day, I mean, unless you pay me, you know, I'm probably not going to be responding to you every day, and there are times when citizens who make frequent public records requests or others will email me directly, and, and I won't respond. I might route that email to appropriate personnel if I think it may require a response somewhere on the food chain, but, you know, imagine if every one of your taxpayers and your residents, they're not just limited to taxpayers, imagine if every one of your residents emailed you all at once, or emailed the town administrator, or town staff, nothing would get done. And part of the problem that, you know, I've experienced, I think a lot of, a lot of government is experiencing, is that as we've changed the ease with which people can be, our local government officials and employees can be accessed, there is this expectation that, you know, I can send an email at 11 o'clock at night, and somebody's going to respond to me by 8:00 AM the next morning. And, you know, so this, unintentionally, like, the, the technology has created this notion that, you know, everybody needs to be accessible and responsive 24/7. I personally, like, would have a meltdown, a breakdown, if that was really the way I had to work, but the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, it's some amount of judgment, but there's no legal obligation, other than what you feel you might owe to the voters to respond.
The reason why I ask pertaining to this particular case, and I mentioned the legal action, is I'm, I'm not a legal professional, I do not want to say the wrong word and put the town in jeopardy, so I would.
And I don't want you to either.
No, I would rather it stay in the official channels.
Yeah, and, and, you know, obviously, if someone reaches out to you, whether it be Mr. Dergan or anybody else, that you know has a lawsuit pending against the town, and it's specifically about the lawsuit, or it inquired, you send it to me, right? Or you, you know, you, my recommendation would be you not respond, right? But people sue government all the time, and they're still our residents, and they still transact business with the town, they need to pay their, their, you know, they need to register their dogs, and they need to, you know, they certainly have the right to engage in basic, you know, the same basic transactional inquiries that all of your residents have the right to do. So sometimes it just, you know, it's a judgment call to some degree, but I obviously would never recommend that folks engage one-on-one with a, with a plaintiff in a lawsuit against us about the very nature of the complaint, or even factual matters that are tangentially related to that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan.
To follow up on Kerry, but you kind of touched on it, but I just want to make sure I'm clear and the message is clear. If anybody, including Mr. Dergan, has active litigation against the town, basically speaking, the best practice is not to engage, whether it's through email, social media, basic constituent service is one thing, it's another thing to, as Kerry was alluding to, to maybe inadvertently use a wrong word or a wrong phrase, or the person that's litigating the town is trying to engage you perceives, perceives the word you said in a different manner, or changes that word to say, I only do is ask a question, look at you, you're bullying me, you're harassing me, you're not transparent, which is one of his favorite phrases, and I've been doing it almost 20 years, Paul, me and Paul and I are the longest too, but everybody's been involved for several years, several boards, I don't think the town, through social media, we have new people, town clerk, this town has never been more transparent, and anybody that doesn't think so, of course, I'm probably getting fact-checked right now live, saying, oh, the guy don't even do Facebook, what does he know? But I, so I just want to reinforce what you said, that the best practice is not to engage, not, not to be drawn into this, I get personal emails accusing me of refusing to do a man-to-man talk with a person who's suing the town.
And so the lawyer in me cringes at the thought that there would be the, you know, one might think, hey, maybe if I could just sit down and talk to this person, we could work it out. The days of that happening, in my experience, are just, they don't exist anymore, and you know that saying that you hear on TV sometimes, when cops are reading people Miranda writes, and they say, anything you say can and will be used against you, or may be used against you in a court of law. may be used against you in a court of law." I mean, anything that you say, or put in an email, or put on Facebook, like, that is out there, that's in the world, and that can be used. However, whether it's true or not, it can be spun in different ways, and I don't envy you folks, quite frankly. I mean, I get asked all the time why I'm not in public office in my town, and aside from the fact that my husband would probably divorce me, right, because of all the night meetings. But, you know, I give you all a lot of credit, because it is very hard to be a public official right now in the climate that we're in, because nothing you do is right. Nothing you do is right, nothing you say is right, it's, everybody's hypercritical. And I feel like what we've just experienced over this past year with the pandemic, that there's not been enough recognition, or just even an understanding of the amount of work that has had to go into making sure that people are as safe as they can be, and responding to the daily changes. I mean, you know, when the governor declared a state emergency, March 10th, 12th, 2020, I probably spent that next six months almost on 24/7, because we were constantly having to analyze, "What's the latest thing? What's the newest rule?" And we've had to follow that throughout. And you folks have been in the boots on the ground, and you've had to deal with it and deal with, you know, when there's an outbreak, and how do we handle that? And so, I don't think, and I'm not trying to, like, be a shrill for town government, right, but I just don't know that people understand the amount of time that is devoted just to making sure that you had PPE and that you were, because it impacts every, the response to the pandemic impacted every facet of town government, from the most mundane to the most, you know, broad policy questions. And so, it's been a lot this past year, and it's, you know, it can, there was, you know, I found this remote meeting issue, the ability to do Zooms or other, to be pretty interesting. Heck, it was easier for me. I didn't have to get in a car and drive anywhere. But, you know, there are folks who felt that that was not, they wanted back to in-person. You know, I'm expecting that you've probably felt, you've heard that all along the pandemic, "Why can't we hold an in-person meeting?" Right? Some folks view that as a return to normalcy, but there's just a lot that goes on behind the scenes. And, you know, right now, we've got, this isn't wood, is there wood? You know, but we're sort of coming up on the, what I hope to be, the downslope of the pandemic. Maybe we're moving, but you've got an election, you've got town meeting, you've got the normal functions of government that, in non-pandemic times, still require a lot of time and a lot of attention. And, you know, people maybe started to tune in this past year, because they could, they didn't have to come to town hall to see a meeting, they could watch it whenever they wanted, from their computer, when it was convenient for their schedule. And it just, you know, maybe that folks who hadn't previously necessarily been able to or wanted to spend that time to come to town hall and look at, watch the ongoings of board meetings in person, or who weren't able to, right? Because let's face it, this time of night, people have kids, they've got childcare issues, you know, they've got a lot of things going on in their lives. It just brings it, if all you're looking at for government is the past year, if that's your lens, like, you really are looking at government that operated very differently than it ever had before the pandemic. And it might be a bit unfair to, you know, sort of be critical of certain things that really just were, we're all just doing the best we can, right?
One more, and then I'll be good. To follow up kind of what you said. Social media, short of trying to address everything. And this happened six or seven months ago, I believe. Same person, the complainant, took a clip from a meeting, and I think Mr. Marcy was the one who figured it out, that happened like, a couple of years ago. I was actually referring to Paul, and the reason why you knew, things have changed in people's lives, and tried to say, "This is what our, you know, paraphrasing, our senior selectmen said about this issue." And he cut and pasted, or whatever he phrased, I phrased that, something that wasn't even germane to what happened that night. How do we, you can't address every single thing, but when someone blatantly, what's the town, what they, I mean, I don't, I haven't talked to Paul about it, but what's the town's remedy when someone, what's our remedy back when someone's deliberately trying to do something to paint town government in a bad light?
So, I wish I had the magic answer for you, because I'd be retired right now. I would have marketed it, and I would have sold it, and I would have been retired by now, right? This is the age we're living in, and I'm not convinced that there's a way that we all can agree on a common set of facts anymore. Just not, right? And it's ultimately a policy decision for your board and town administration about how much to engage in trying to refute information that's out there that may not be completely accurate. I mean, it's unfortunate if, regardless of, forget who we're talking about, right? I'm not talking about Dave Durgan or anybody else. But if there is misinformation out there, and you've made reasonable efforts, such as through board meetings, or making information available on the town website, like, you may just not be able to convince people. As I said, I think the sky's blue. But if you're insistent in believing that the sky is red, I'm not sure that there's much that can be done to try to refute that. And it's a struggle. And I have many discussions with managers and administrators who, you know, are, let's say they're at the tail end of their career, and this is, you know, the past few years have really ushered in a new age for town government. It's an incredible challenge, it's very difficult to deal with. I personally have never seen anybody get ahead, so to speak, get ahead of the curve, and convince people who, you know, really want to believe that you're hiding things, or that this is all a big secret in a way to try to keep the public from knowing what's going on. I don't know that there is an effective way to persuade people otherwise. I really don't.
So, he can cut and paste, anybody can cut and paste and put something out there that we know, we know is not true, short of trying to address it, no recourse.
To go to Kerry's question a little earlier, the chairman, about, "Do I respond to every email?" Right? I mean, if he's cutting impatient from meeting, the whole meeting video is available, or audio is available somewhere, and folks can educate themselves and listen to the whole thing and see the context, but how many times do you hear someone on the media, or, you know, the news, or even on social media, you know, where you're hearing a bit of the story, and maybe that's not the whole story? Maybe it's to fit a particular narrative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I wish I had, I wish I had a fix.
Quick question, because I don't want to take away from Mr. Marcy.
Just trying to lay out some of the other stuff that we deal with.
Go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
Michelle, is there anything that could, under the law, that would, that would even vaguely resemble the requirement for a town? I can't even hear myself speak. I'm sorry.
You're far enough away. It's okay.
Is there anything under the law that is being misinterpreted by someone who's not a lawyer, or vaguely resembles, or could even be argued, that there was any requirement whatsoever for the meeting to be livestreamed or broadcasted on cable?
No, and I think to that point, right, where I was getting to, and maybe I didn't make, you know, connect the dots all the way in, but, you know, people got used to a certain thing during the pandemic, right? You had to provide some kind of access to an entirely virtual meeting. If it was on Zoom, people needed to be able to dial in, or only if technology failed, you know, you just had no ability otherwise to fix that problem because of undue burden and expense, and despite best efforts, you couldn't make that meeting accessible in real time. Then you had the option to post a recording, or a video, audio, on the website, or a transcript even, at a later date. But that's not what this was. This was an in-person meeting. And so, people got used to the virtual meetings and being able to sort of dial in. I think Mr. Durgan in one of his emails said, yeah, or one of his posts, I think it was the post in regard to this meeting, liked it better when it was on Facebook Live, and he'd get a ding reminding him that there was a meeting coming up. But it's not our obligation to do that. And in fact, I think to, for the, to even think that the law would put that type of obligation on us is just, it would boggle the mind. That'd just be too much for any public body to adhere to. So, if this was a purely virtual meeting, be a different story. But it wasn't. It was in-person.
And through Mr. Chairman, was it, is it inappropriate for municipality to engage legal counsel when they're accused of an open meeting violation? Is this like?
Well, as I mentioned, like, I do this all the time, right? I mean, if you asked me 27, almost 28 years ago, when I became a lawyer, whether or not I'd be looking through people's emails in response to public records requests and doing these type of things, I never would have fathomed it. But this is, you know, sort of bread and butter, unfortunately for me, because this is what's happening right now. People are very critical. Transparency is a buzzword that everybody, whether it be board members, or people in the community, you know, transparency. And look, I'm not dishing transparency, right? I think we've seen things over the past few years where, you know, we understand and value transparency, but, you know, to sort of cloak everything in transparency is, and say, "Oh, you're not being transparent enough." I mean, at some point, government's still got to operate. And as long as we comply with the law, and in your case, even go beyond what the law requires, when you can, for the most part, to then sort of say, "Well, I'm unhappy because, you know, you didn't give me that extra," or "I liked the way it was before." I mean, I'm willing to bet that you had folks that were complaining when you went to virtual meetings, right?
Yeah.
People wanted things in the, they wanted to come back to town hall, and they wanted to be here in person, and it was a tough balancing for all of my communities, quite frankly, because there are constituencies that, you know, think it was better the old way.
So, in terms, Mr. Chairman, of, and I just want to bring this up publicly. In terms of public records requests that Michelle just mentioned, particularly when it's with a, with a person who tends to be litigious, when there's an active case, could you explain for the board and anybody who may want to watch this recording, which we are going to post when it's ready to go, could you explain the difference between a public records request versus someone who is in some form of active complaint or litigation, and the requirement for discovery, and how that kind of conflicts with, discovery conflicts with public record requests, and thereby why municipalities are forced to engage town counsel to make those determinations?
So, there's categories of records that, to me, are public, and I think we all agree. Open session meeting minutes, you know, your bylaws, I mean, they're just categories that are public, and we try, to the extent that you have the technological infrastructure and ability to do so, to make that stuff available on a website, right? But public records requests are not, as the way the law is currently written, are not an avenue to circumvent what are established civil and criminal discovery rules in litigation. Now, it's not uncommon, and I see it happen quite frequently, where, you know, an individual who's in litigation, maybe their lawyer tells them, "Hey, go ask the town for this. Go make a public records request." Then I'm not charging you $250, $300, $800, or, I don't know if you all saw, the former Attorney General is working at a law firm in Washington, where he's about $20, $300 an hour. You know, not charging some astronomical, I'm in the wrong business, clearly, but not charging some astronomical, or even just a modest attorney's fee, to do the work in discovery that perhaps someone can get in a public records request. And there is an exemption under the public records law for information, an exemption from public disclosure, to information that might influence our litigation strategy in a particular case. So, you know, those are, those are hard calls, and sometimes only the lawyers can do that, right? Because we have generally, if we're worth what you pay us, you know, we generally have a better sense of what information might be relevant to your, you know, your ongoing deliberations as to a case strategy, or how to prosecute it, or what could hurt us, or what could help us. And so, sometimes, when you release something in response to a public records request, it's out there. And if Jane Doe asked for it, and John Smith asked for it, I don't care who asked for it, if we've given it to the public, now, I mean, it's out there in the world, and we have no control over it once it's out in the world. And so, you know, we like to see what it is, we like to evaluate it, and we like to help you folks make determinations about whether or not, even despite a piece of litigation, that's something that someone's asking for, this is really something that is, in the truest sense of the word, ought to be public, or we're very clear that whether we agree or disagree with that, that the state would, would tell us that we would have to turn it over. And so, you know, as I said, anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. And some folks may feel that that's being too, too legal, right? You know, that they don't like the fact that the lawyers get involved and, you know, try to, in some view, you know, act as some sort of barrier to full and fair transparency. But like, at the end of the day, you get sued for something, if there's damages, who pays it? Taxpayers pay it. And part of my job is to try to mitigate against that, right? And so, when I look at, whether I'm looking at public records requests, or I'm looking at open meeting law complaints, or whatever it is, I mean, you know, I feel, like, I'll tell you the straight story, right? I'll tell you if I think you messed up, or I'll tell you if you think you have to turn something over, because I view that as part of my job, right? I'm not going to just tell you what you want to hear, because that's the way you want to hear it. But by the same token, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want us to compound things if we can avoid that. And sometimes you inadvertently step into things that you don't mean to, all under maybe a well-intentioned guise of trying to, you know, engage with folks in an effort, you know, in an effort to try to resolve a dispute that you might think could be easily resolved. It can be particularly challenging when we're dealing with someone who does not have an attorney, because attorneys generally, not always, but generally know the rules of the road, so to speak, and the, how things are supposed to work. And there's ethical rules that apply to attorneys directly contacting government officials when, you know, whom they know to be represented by counsel in a particular case. But the fact is, there's also a carve-out for people who just, you know, have the right, even when they sue you, to come into town hall, to ask questions of the, you know, they want, "I want to know what my water bill is." You know, they have those rights as citizens that sort of transcend litigation. So, we often have to look very carefully at what they're asking for to see. Is it directly related, closely related to a piece of litigation, and would it impact how we defend a case, or prosecute, in the rare instances where we're actually the plaintiff? That's why, that's why we do it.
So, basically, we won't step in anything if we stand still. Got it. Mr. Marcy?
Okay. I was taking some notes on some of the words that I heard talked about here tonight. Number one is taxpayers. Number two is transparency. And something the public, I mean, I've been, I've been serving this town for over a decade in a couple of different positions. This is my third time, third term as a selectman. And one of the things I always say to people who ask me a question, I say it on TV, I say it, you know, whoever I'm talking to, is assume positive intent, that people who run for these offices and get elected, they do anything for the right reasons. And I stand by my record, this board's record. I am proud to serve with every one of these gentlemen, and everybody who I've served with in the past, to do this. And it seems, if I'm a taxpayer, and I've seen a lot of this stuff come by our desk over the last, you know, couple of years here, I want to ask questions. One, how much money have we spent on this? How much time have we spent when we could have been doing something else? And we're in the middle of a pandemic, where we were working on, here's that other word, transparency, to try to make sure that the residents had their, the COVID stats published weekly, so they had something to look forward to as the rate was going down. I'm proud of that. We should be proud of that. Jonathan has worked his ass off to try to make sure people who were, got the information they needed. To me, this type of stuff seems very self-serving to me. It's political, and I, I just, I don't, I don't like this at all. I didn't get involved to have to deal with this, and have people throw rocks at me, and this board, and this town, because I take it personally. I'm a public figure. I get it. If the complainant has messaged me personally, I have reached out to the complainant personally to have a conversation, like you said earlier. Hey, Rachel, let's talk about this. I have. That's me. I'll talk to anybody. But on something like this, you know, okay, pandemic, all right, let's, it's like, let's play the gotcha game. The town's business needs to go on. We have a lot of business to do. We have a budget coming up. We've laid people off. We've had, you know, we've had furrows, yet we kept the lights on. We kept services going. Right? And rather than asking the taxpayers to pay more money for, you know, some other quality of life issue, here we are, I'm sorry, Michelle, spending money on legal, because this is, in this day and age, we have to defend ourselves, right? I assume positive intent. I reach out, "Hey, let's talk about this." But in this day, you can't. And you say, "You can never change anybody's mind, because they're doing it for the wrong because they're doing it for the wrong reasons, right? It's very political and self-serving to me. So I would like to know how, how much money we have spent, you know, answering things over and over and over again? How much money have we spent in legal dollars? How much time have we spent that takes people away from doing the town's business?
How many documents have we produced?
How many documents have we provided to people on this?
In that vein too, Mr. Chair. How many documents have we provided? And now the request is coming from a family member, and they've already gotten the documents previous, and they're re-requesting things. And I understand the town clerk has to address requests on a case-by-case basis, but we got, my understanding is, we've gotten requests for documents that have already been given to.
So I think, you know, people have a right to make these requests.
Absolutely.
No doubt about it. And there's, and there are limits. It's very limited, the circumstances where we could ever say that something has become harassing to the point where we would be able to request that the state supervisor say, you know what, no more requests from you. These are transparency laws, these are sunshine laws. They are meant to give people access, right?
Which we're not disputing, by the way.
Which, I'm not saying that you are, right? Right? But the point of those laws skews and balances in favor of the individual, okay? So we know that that's where we're headed into this. And, you know, to the point of the amount, I don't have the number handy, right? But we keep track of it for you so that you will be able to say, this is the total dollar amount, right, that has been spent on non-litigation-related matters. You know, it doesn't matter if you're in the same household. Doesn't matter if you're friends, you know. Everybody has the right to ask for things individually. We have, I feel that I have probably advocated for more provision of records without fees than, you know. I look at, I look at these things and I say, is this something that is ought to be public? Like, just something that, to me, there's no question that we should provide it, and that we should provide it at no charge. But, you know, when we get requests upon request upon request, I think we're absolutely justified to assess a fee and to require that someone pay us that fee. You know, it's, and I often advocate, and, you know, I don't know if you folks really always see all the responses that I work on to these public records requests. But I, you know, I will say, look, you know, this is available on the website. We're giving you this for free. If this isn't what you want, then we're going to charge you a fee for something else. And I think, again, something that's lost on a lot of people during the pandemic is that, you know, with your furloughs, with your reductions in staff, and with the added work that you have to do that's pandemic-related, the amount of time that individuals have, that the staff members have to do the essential business, and public records are essential business, but to get like the operational stuff done, you've got an election coming up, right? Getting, that's no easy task, right? And you've had furloughs, reductions in staff, you have people moving around, maybe they're, you know, working in an office that they hadn't worked in before. You know, it's just, it's not an ideal time to be testing our, you know, our ability to handle all of these things, you know, with a snap of a finger. I just don't think it's fair, quite frankly. But we do it.
We do it.
And I have a number of my communities that have turned to the attorneys for assistance because the election still has to happen. Or because they're in the middle of, you know, an outbreak, and all the time and attention has to be focused on dealing with that, right? And so, it is, it's not Dudley. It's all across, I have towns where I literally am dealing with a public records request a week. It's not ideal to pay lawyer rates, quite frankly. But sometimes you have no other choice because your staff, especially if it's limited or if it's restricted, or if it's working, folks are working remotely, maybe don't have the same access in person, you know. There's a lot of factors that have occurred over the past year, which is when we've really seen the uptick in these type of requests. There's a lot of limitations that folks just don't get on how, the burdens and the requirements that are put on town staff. So much stuff, as Selectman Marcy said, goes on behind the scenes that isn't visible. People don't see it. But they'd see it if he didn't do it.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I? And yet, they all got it done. Having less staff in this building, with everything that was going on, they still did it and gave everything that was required of this town. Because we always do the next right thing, no matter what. No matter what anybody says, I will, I stand by that.
And none of us are perfect. Like, I'm not, you know, we get it, right? We all work, I mean, there are times when I'm looking at something and go, oh, this is due today. You know, I mean, it's, we're all, we're all in that boat. But, you know, I personally, like, it's just, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing about my personality, but I like calendar, every single thing. When is it due? I'm sending reminders. Because you all have some more important things, I think, to deal with, right? I'm not on the front line. I don't even do the COVID enforcement in my office, thankfully. I'm not running in, you know, I'm not advising boards of health. And like I said, I hope we're past the big, the brunt of it. But no one knows for sure, right? And, you know, I just think that it's a lot to ask your staff to be able to, you know, manage all of these things in the middle of a pandemic. And to not really get any kind of recognition, right, that this is, hey, look, can you cut us some slack? We're in the middle of something that's never happened before, potentially since 1918, right? You know, but there doesn't, you know, we comply with the law because we're required to. There isn't necessarily an opt-out card, you know. It's state of emergency, we're exempted from these various things.
Mr. Marcy?
Yep. And speaking of recognition and catching somebody doing something good, I'd like to thank the town clerk. In her first year in this job, she has run a presidential election through a pandemic and has handled these requests and these types of things with the utmost professionalism.
And early voting, and mail-in voting, and all those changes.
And she just got it done. So Lori, thank you. You deserve a lot of credit for this.
I mean, it's a lot. I mean, none of us knew what to expect.
No.
I mean, this is unprecedented for all of us. And, you know, it's unfortunate that some choose to look at, you know, sort of the aha-gotcha moments, if they can. But I, you know, I have no doubt everyone here is trying their hardest.
Anyone else? Lori, did you have something?
No, unless you have any questions for me on anything.
Do you have a number of how many documents?
I do in the office, I have an Excel sheet, but I don't have that with me too.
Okay. Is it more than, more than 1,000?
From everyone?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one request that was received alone was 1,000 documents.
A thousand documents.
Was 1,000 documents from one request.
Does that deal with the topic we're speaking of this evening?
Yes.
1,000 documents.
1,000 documents.
In the middle of a pandemic, someone has to photocopy something 1,000 times.
They have to look it up file by file. It was, in this case, building permits. Remove those files, scan them, assign a naming convention to the scan. They have to replace it into the file, and then they have to move on to the next one. And they have to get, and they produce 1,000 documents in one request alone. And then put everything back, refile it.
In the interest of transparency, I think whatever we can do to make that public, we should. Mr. Sullivan.
So to follow up on that with either the administrator or the clerk, in stating, as counsel did earlier, that's absolutely the person who requested, it's right. But, correct me if I'm wrong, folks, this person was pushing timelines and pushing deadlines. And meanwhile, whereas Mr. Marcy said we had to reduce staff, so I believe counsel had to step in, and we got opinion from the state that because of the short staff thing, we got more time to get it done, but we got it done, right?
Well, so honestly, you really were held to the 10-business-day deadline for most of the pandemic. There was a short, like, when Town Hall was closed entirely, right? There was some acknowledgement by the supervisor generally that, you know, when Town Hall is closed due to the pandemic, we're not going to count that time. But I personally, you know, when I look at those, when we got things in during that time period, I still felt compelled to answer, and I recommended that we answer, at least providing that initial response within the initial 10-business-days whenever possible. Because the law says if we don't provide that response and estimate within the first 10-business-days, we can never charge a fee. And where the requests were asking for a diversion of town employees' staff time to find these things. And look, in an ideal world, everything would be available at a click of a button, everything would be computerized, and it'd be great. But, you know, a lot of requests that we've received have gone back in time, have required folks to look up, you know, older files and identify responsive information. And it's, it isn't at a click of a button. And I don't know that town government will ever, I don't mean Dudley, I mean any town government. It'll be a great day for me when we ever get to that point where everything is computerized and available readily. But it's, that costs money, right? It costs money, it costs resources, it's tough. So, you know, even, even still, with whatever latitude we were afforded during the pandemic, if there were people working, albeit remotely, you know, we tried in every instance to provide that initial response and estimate within the first 10-business-days of receipt.
Okay, so the short answer then is, the wheels of day-to-day government, and I'm accepting the fact that a request for documentation is valid, and, but as Mr. Marcy said, probably a little more eloquent than I'm trying, the day-to-day wheels of government, the actual functions of government in the pandemic, in the short staff, and everything we all acknowledge, our staff provided. Lori's office, the town clerk's office delivered, administrator's office delivered, in conjunction with some things you helped, obviously, delivered. And it goes back to what I said before. For someone to, in his own words, to me, in an email which I didn't respond to, if my sarcasm shows through, so be it, that's who I am, still feels it necessary, take that one last little shot on the way out the door, as the saying goes. And I know you can't, no one can control it.
No.
But as Mr. Marcy said, Lori's office, town clerk's office should be commended, should be recognized. Our office, conjunction with you, other boards, I'm sure have produced things when requested, and keep the wheels of government going when we're running on three wheels instead of four. And I'll be the first one, I've always said it, I feel like I have, that everybody involved in all this legally requested documentation and provided should be commended, thanked. And I hope people that, I don't want to say frivolous, wrong word, see the big picture at some point.
It just bothers me, editorial. It just bothers me that we have limited staff here in the building, and someone that could be helping someone get a vaccine through the program we have at the town instead has to make a photocopy of a neighbor's pool deck.
From 12 years ago.
Mr. Marcy?
But just to circle back to what I said earlier, you know, these, again, taxpayers need to know like the, what we're talking about here, the, how much we're talking. We got the documents, but how much we've spent on KP? And how much staff time, if we could estimate that? I mean, that's, that's a hard cost that we have to absorb when we could be spending money on something else. He's hard on. We always say around here that we do the best we can with what we have. And this stuff stretches it even more, is what I'm trying to say, when I find this is very self-serving and political and whatever other adjective you want to use.
And I think Attorney Randazzo, Mr. Chair, hit the nail on the head earlier also. Not even working here, but you deal with certain staff. You know, and you acknowledge the fact that we had had and continue to have, I believe, people in an office that may not be 100% familiar with, in a function that they're not 100% familiar with. Carrie hit the nail on, the chairman hit the nail on the head. We have people that we use to assist the health clinic, the shots, the scheduling, when you call someone, answer the phone, the kiosk. People doing things that they're not, out of their comfort zone, I guess is a good way to phrase it. And we still get it done. And then you get kicked in the teat saying, oh, yeah, I saw online that your video equipment's down, you can't broadcast it. And then two days later, where's the video? I already acknowledged you can't do it, I know you can't do it. And again, a simple phone call to the town. What did you mean by video problems? Was it, you know, and you want to let your sarcasm show through, using your terminology? You can make a little joke, oh, was it unplugged? Ha, ha, ha. No, it's old, it hadn't been turned on. I'm not a technical guy, we had Spectrum come in. That's why it's not done. And by the way, it's not a requirement, if that's your next question. You can look it up, but it's not, I just, it's, as everyone said here, it's mind-boggling, and I know you don't have the magic wand, you can't make it go away. And I probably said more than I planned on tonight, so.
Well, if I could just briefly, just to sort of wrap things up, right? Whether we're talking about the open meeting law complaint tonight or other things, I mean, oftentimes, what you're required to do under both of these sunshine laws, there's a lot of burden put on town officials and town staff to know what the law requires, to know how to apply it, and to be able to conform with all the regulations in place. And even though I may, I don't personally, but you're paying us a larger hourly rate than you're probably paying most employees, the fact is, I can get it done quicker because I do it enough all across the board, across this town and other towns. Whereas if a staff was left, a staff member was left to do this themselves and comply with all the legal requirements, they could be spending countless hours spinning their wheels. And that's just not an efficient use of town time, period. I've had boards that have done this, gotten open meeting law complaints and responded to them themselves. And then they get back from the Attorney General, well, you didn't do it right, right? That's why you use counsel, right? You want to get it right the first time. You don't want to spin your wheels, and I don't, especially in a pandemic, but not just in a pandemic. I can just get it done quicker than a staff person because I know what it is. I know what I'm looking at, I know how to address it. And while we're always, like, I love to be in a position where town staff gets to the point where they don't need my intervention because, trust me, I got plenty of work. I don't need the town of Dudley to justify my existence, right? And I'm not being flip, I love working with you folks, but honest to goodness, I don't need any more work. But it's just, you know, the reality is, is that the law has so many requirements on folks that it's so easy for, you know, poor Lori, who's in the middle of doing an election or otherwise, you know, juggling all those balls, that sometimes these things aren't, you know, it's just going to be more efficient for me to help assist in response. And I realize people don't like that. They don't like it because of the cost, and they don't like it because I generally answer right. And, you know, there's not a lot of aha-gotchas. And we don't, you know, hey, look, supervisor of records, Attorney General, sometimes they disagree with us. But, you know, I feel very strongly that the way I help you folks respond to these things is the way I help everybody. And we're consistent in how we approach things. And I'll tell you, if I think you're being, if somebody's being unreasonable or if they're reacting to something that they shouldn't have in terms of whatever it is they're responding to. But, you know, to try to have folks, you saw what I put together. It's not long, it's four pages. But, you know, no offense, but like, would you, I can't, I don't know, it's four pages, but, you know, no offense, but like, would you, I can't, I don't know, I don't know what you would have put together as a written response, right? You know what I mean? And then you would have been in a position with the attorney general maybe saying you didn't, you know, respond.
Mr. Chairman.
We're happy to have you. Thank you.
We are, and the town of Dudley should feel safe knowing we have the best counsel there is in the state, that's why we chose KP. And to quote Mr. Johnson, we're amateurs when it comes to that stuff, so that's why we need, need people like KP and you, Michelle. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
That's okay. Did you want to say anything?
Hopefully, in reality, to really sum it up, you know, thank you for the in-depth complaint review. I feel it's, it's the right amount of detail, the right amount of work for the review that was needed. I'm satisfied that there isn't a violation and definitely wasn't any intent, a 100-year-old equipment broke and we knew we could continue with the meeting. So hopefully the lodge room equipment can be replaced so we can have our normal meetings and have all the department heads, as long as it's cost-effective, it sounds like it's, sounds like it's a net ballpark. I won't ask for a return on investment.
Charts and graphs.
The return on investment is right here and now.
Well, I would say, you know, a couple more days like this pays for the whole unit, right?
Right. It's, again, we get it through the cable franchise fees that Spectrum pays us, there's no cost to the taxpayer, it's just a delay in getting the.
Scheduling, Mr. Town Administrator? Scheduling to get the work done?
Probably getting the packs.
We've got to order it. It's not something you can buy at Walmart, at production studio essentially. We've got to get, coordinate with Fred and Ted and Spectrum and the vendor for the equipment. And every system is different. It's not just a one-size-fits-all. So it's, it's going to take about three weeks to hammer it out. And we're already through the first week, got the next complaint coming up. So whenever, as, as we mentioned earlier, if the room, if this, in this room, Mr. Chairman, we can record, that's why we're here tonight. But it's a small room, we can't move the equipment into another room. We can only fit the amount of people in this room that we can fit. So whenever we can use it, we're going to. But going down the road, there are joint meetings coming up, we're in the middle of budget season, we appropriately post the meetings, if it's a hearing, we appropriately post that and we appropriately advertise it if it's a hearing and the door is unlocked. I double-checked it tonight just to be on the safe side, but it's always unlocked. And come to the meeting, because there is nothing preventing people from coming to the meeting if they're interested. We apologize for the inconvenience.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What Mr. Ruda just said goes back to what we said earlier in the beginning of this meeting. Other boards have used this room, but they're not joint meetings, they're not public hearings, they understand the limitations, they understand how many people they can put in here, and that's why they choose to, because we could ask our assistant video coordinator when they anticipate a bigger crowd or when they anticipate they moved into that room when the technologies allowed it. So I think we need to move on probably pretty quick soon on this, but there is a reason behind being here and not being here all the time. And we can't have people in the hall trying to lean and listen and if we got a 12-person limit, I'll make, you know, that's about what we probably could fit, you're going to ask four people to leave so four people can come in and then they got questions and yeah, it doesn't, it's.
That doesn't work.
We're doing the best we can to upgrade. Mr. Ruda's done all the legwork, now it's just a question of timing, as he just said. Vendors, Spectrum, get the equipment in the building.
Yes, Paul.
Mr. Joseph, before we wrap up, did you have anything you'd like to add or ask, sir?
No, I just wanted to, well, yeah, you know me, I have to say that I think the heat, the discussion has beaten this thing to death and we should have ended it a long time.
We're just being thorough, Mr. Joseph.
Fair enough, fair enough. See, I don't get out, I don't get out much.
Transparency.
I don't get out much these days, so, you know.
So this war, so this agenda item states, open meeting law complaint, April 7th, 2021, from Daniel Durigan, acknowledge receipt, discuss complaint and any action to be taken thereon. What would you like from us for action if anything?
If the response is good the way it's drafted, I'd ask that the board vote to adopt the response and authorize me to send it on its behalf. I don't believe, in my opinion, that there's any remedial action that's required by the board at this time.
So move.
Yeah. With the second, with this quick.
I'll repeat it.
Would Mr. Johnson.
Or I'll tell you, it's a motion to approve, adopt the response as drafted by town council.
Accept acknowledgement, too, Michelle, sorry?
Well, we spent an hour.
Okay, all right.
Acknowledging the complaint.
So other, Michelle, we have one, first and second.
Yep.
Right? I didn't know if you could hear them with the masks on.
Second.
Mr. Johnson was the first, Mr. Sullivan was the second. These masks are quite insulated.
And I don't want to have to repeat that again.
And, and the motion was to adopt the response and authorize me to send it on the board's behalf.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Paul Gilson, aye.
Carrie Sigunovich, a unanimous, thank you very much, Attorney Rendazzo.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Good to see you, in person.
I think I'm sticking around for a little while, too.
Next on the agenda, we have town administrator presents draft warrant articles, board to vote on articles presented or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Ruda.
Mr. Chairman, we're actually not ready to vote on any of these articles because they still have several processes to go through. Some of them have been placed as placeholders on the, on the warrant and still need to go through public hearing process and so forth and report of capital improvement, FAA, that sort of thing. But I did want to get the draft into the board's hands sooner rather than later for the, if there are any questions in it.
Yes, Mr. Joseph.
I'm going to move that we acknowledge receipt of the draft of the warrant article from the town administrator.
Second, with one question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
After our joint meeting the other night, in the face of misinformation that was put out, the two subdivisions that are looking, one's looking for acceptance, one's looking for partial acceptance, are we going to placeholder those in case the planning board has the ability to complete the process through the special hearing on one of them, I mean, a public hearing, sorry, not special, public, in order to address any potential waivers that have come up subsequent to the approval of the subdivision? We can placeholder them to.
If it, if it comes back, Mr. Sullivan, through the chair, it will absolutely go back on this draft warrant.
Somewhere.
For us to vote on, correct.
All right, so somebody will reach out to the planning board and let them know that they got a timeline they have to try to follow if they want to get them in. It's not, the burden's not on the town, the burden's on the developer to settle outstanding issues.
And ultimately the planning board.
Right, right, but they have to, they have to settle it and they have to do their processing before it gets back to us.
So the motion was Mr. Joseph, seconded by Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you for.
Any further discussion, Mr. Marcy?
Just a real quick question, Jonathan, what's the last day to get an article added to the warrant?
For, for the, for the departments, it's just before we, well, in time for legal counsel to review it.
Okay.
Which is, I think we have it the first week of May vicinity. But petition articles closed on the night. Public citizen.
Okay, because I was kind of going where Mr. Sullivan was.
Planning board has to understand that they're incumbent under a.
We can do that right up until, yeah, right up until the time that we review and post it.
Okay.
We can place articles on.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Paul Gilson, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Carrie Sigunovich, a unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have old business town administrator evaluation, discussion of timeline for TA evaluation, board to take any action relative thereto. I don't see anything in here, so we're just going to talk about this?
We're just talking about the timeline, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
My evaluation should be complete on June 30th. That said, everybody's busy, we have a very full schedule going forward. I'm happy to, if, if the board doesn't have the past copies of my evaluation for this year, I'm happy to send those back out.
Could you just give those all to us?
Happy to do it.
Can we stick to the, the last format?
We can stick to, right, this is the final evaluation, however, my goals changed significantly over the last fiscal year, so.
I'm just, I'm just trying.
So I just wanted to put that out, out there and I'd be willing to, certainly be willing to talk to board if they, if they felt that they wanted to change any of those, those ways that we've agreed upon evaluating me or.
Before I, when anyone else speak, I just want to say, I don't know, how long will that take you and is that time, is that good time spent as opposed to what you've got going on with everything coming up and going on?
Well, maybe I'll ask town, hey, wait a minute. Our other, Michelle, are you aware of any other towns that are evaluating slightly differently this year in terms of town managers and town administrators or?
Well, I think, you know, to be fair, it's a timing issue. I mean, you've got your town meeting coming up, but I just don't know whether it realistically fits within that timing. I know I worked on John's contract, I don't remember exactly what it said about a timeframe for evaluations, but it certainly was written pre-pandemic and any contract I'm writing right now for a town administrator or town manager, I'm not putting any dates in a performance evaluation section of the contract because it's so hard to, you know, there's no new normal. So I think I would say that it really depends on what else you got going on, quite frankly, and I, I'm not, I'm not John's attorney, I'm not advocating for him, but, you know, goals that you set pre-pandemic really probably went out the window for practical purposes.
Agreed.
See, on one hand, we don't want to do a, I don't want to rubber stamp anything, we need to, there's a lot of things he needs to get credit for. Maybe some things not, but that's up to the board and I, I think he, I think he deserves to have an evaluation. I think we owe that to him. He's done, in my opinion, pretty darn good the past year.
And I think you all can agree, like regardless of what the contract might say about a process, I think you all can agree.
Yeah.
On a deviation from that process.
I think that's what I think, because that's, that's where I was going with it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm not looking to hold you to, I mean, if there's like in-person days over the past year, I mean, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
As long as we meet the contract requirements, I'm okay with that. If we have a way to handle that, then that's fine.
I think a mutual agreement would be fine.
I think that's where I was going, was if you want to change.
We've already missed a couple deadlines.
Oh, we're about to evaluate you, we're going to change who we evaluate you on, you know what I mean? You really kind of can't do that.
I was at the time, so.
As much as I'd like to.
You know, to piggyback, Mr. Johnson, I just said bench the administrator, we've already missed some contractual deadlines anyway and I think by implied mutual agreement, neither side is losing any sleep over it at this time.
Yep, let's just find a way to get it done like we do everything else, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. Hit the nail on the head, Mr. Marcy. Any further discussion on this?
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have board members' comments. Mr. Joseph, do you have anything?
Believe it or not, no.
That's okay. Take a break, you're fine. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, first I want to thank town clerk for being here tonight, ready to assist. Thank Councilor Rendazzo with her, as always, expert opinions and help to get us where we need to get to. Just want to talk about the COVID, as she stated, hopefully we're getting into a better place. We say at every, every meeting, take care, take care of your family, if you have a neighbor, reach out, make sure everybody is okay, we'll get through it if everybody plays by the rules. The state's open now to, I believe, everybody over the age of 16, I think it is, right? So those that haven't, please consider getting the vaccine because the life you save may be your own. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Johnson.
Talking about getting back to the, to normal, I believe the Boy Scout Troop 273 is going to have their yard sale on Memorial Day weekend, that Saturday. They usually run from 9:00 AM to 2:30, 3:00 o'clock, so that's a good sign.
Location?
They missed that last year, right, Jay?
Universal. I believe it's still at UTEC. They haven't had one in, it's over a year now.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan.
Johnson.
Johnson, well, we'll change names, we're fine. Mr. Marcy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just, I'm going to reiterate three things. Assume positive intent, do the next right thing, and be good to each other.
Thank you, Mr. Marcy. Since this one is, is recorded, the last two I've said the same thing, but it didn't get too big of an audience, there's a red banner at the top of the Dudley website. If you haven't gotten a, if you haven't gotten a vaccine, go ahead and click that button, follow the directions, we'll help you get one. We're one of the few communities doing that. We're still doing it, so please, take advantage of it. DudleyMA.gov, little red banner at the top, click on it.
There's your return, there's your return on investment, click on it and get your shot.
That's it. That's it, one of the benefits to being a Dudley, one of many benefits to being a Dudley resident.
Mr. Chairman, I made an executive decision and gave the department heads the night off based on the close proximity of the previous meeting, no new information report.
That's fine, they can, they can take, they can take the Tuesday night off, that's fine.
It's nice, too, because of the space we've got, it's took now.
Good call.
Next up, we, it looks like adjournment into executive session. Who will carry us into executive?
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we move it to executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 38, section A, subsection 7, review and consider possible release of executive session minutes and according with general law, chapter 38, section 22, F and G, executive session minutes, June 1st, 2019, August 12, 2019, not to adjourn into open session and the conclusion of executive will conclude the town's business two nights.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Paul Gilson, aye.
Carrie Sigunovich, a unanimous. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Paul, we're going to call you back from the other room.